I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, fantastic. First up, we've got our updates from Parker Chamber of Commerce. Do we have, let's see, Kara, you are there. If we can go ahead and unmute Kara and let her give her update.
There we go. I think I'm unmuted now. Good evening and thank you so much for having me this evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. We have a couple of things going on with the chamber. Number one and most important, we are moving. So we are going just right across the street to Parker Station and we will be doing that mid-December, probably opening our doors to the public by right after the holidays, January 1st. So really excited about just a new opportunity, a great courtyard, so you will look for us across the street in weeks to come. Second of all, we do have the Town of Parker Magazine Directory in full force. It should be ready to go also in January. Just a lot of really new exciting things coming for that as well. And then, let's see. I do have a letter that our Board of Directors has asked that I read to you this evening if you have a quick minute. I will start. It says, Dear Mayor and Council Members, Over the weekend, the Parker Area Chamber of Commerce was made aware of a DBA letter being circulated requesting a reprieve-
Kara, could you hold on a sec? Cheryl, do you mind? She's reading a letter from her board to council. So it's important for everyone to be paying attention on that. Go ahead, Kara.
Do you want me to start over?
Please.
Okay, sorry. And I'm going to be sending this also in an email to you as well. Dear Mayor and Council Members, Over the weekend, the Parker Area Chamber of Commerce was made aware of a DBA letter being circulated, requesting a reprieve from taxation for local bars and restaurants inside of the boundaries of the Town of Parker. Our own Board of Directors was able to connect over this time period and would like to voice our support of this initiative. We would also like for you to consider expanding the scope of this request. In our community, there are several of our partner members that have had a difficult time during the COVID-19 pandemic. These businesses include many defined by the governor as non-critical retail operations. It is our hope that you will expand your consideration to all small businesses in the Town of Parker as you consider a potential tax respite. Sincerely, the Chamber of Commerce. And again, I will be sending that letter to you in email as well. Any questions?
Kara, actually, I do have a question just for clarification on that. Are your members or is your board through this letter wanting your members to still collect the sales tax and just keep it or not collect sales tax at all?
My understanding is not collect sales tax at all, but I could be misunderstood and I do not believe that Omar is on this call this evening. So I can seek clarification for you on that issue and let you know if that would be all right.
Absolutely. It's just that's one of the questions that's come up several times is if it's still collect the 8% sales tax and keep it or not collect any sales tax at all. So if you could just get clarification of what they want in that letter, that'd be awesome before you send it out to council.
You got it. I will do that for sure and have that clarified for you. Thank you. Any other questions?
Council, any other questions? Oops, someone had to mute their phone real quick. All right. Nope, looks like we're good.
Thank you for everything you've done, Mr. Mayor, for this year and the years before, and I wish you all a just happy holiday and a merry Christmas. Thank you so much for everything you've done for the Chamber of Commerce.
Wonderful. Thank you, Kara. Good luck on your move.
Thank you. Good evening.
All right. So next up, we have Downtown Business Alliance updates. Is there someone here from the DBA? Danette, do you see anybody from the DBA?
Anne Barrington, just one moment.
Okay. Oh, I heard singing, Anne.
I'm just singing here in the background.
All right, Anne, you're up.
Okay, sorry about this.
There you go.
Okay. Hey, so thank you, Mayor and Town Council. Again, I'm Anne Barrington and I'm here on behalf of the Downtown Business Alliance. So we would like to thank all the council members and Mayor for the opportunity to speak in front of you tonight. And then we would also like to thank you outgoing Mayor Mike Wade for your service, 12 years, and council members Debbie Lewis for 16 years of service and Josh Rivera for eight years. And we know you'll be back. Josh, thank you Jim Cleveland also for your service as the Deputy Town Administrator. And thank you again, town staff and all the hard, for all the hard work you do and continue to do. So one update that we are still working on as the Downtown Business Alliance is with those planters and entertainment decks for downtown. We did meet with members of the town and we're still working to further this process. We're really hoping to get this pushed through so we can have some more seating for downtown, for the restaurants. And I guess this is kind of, maybe because of the order, it would have probably been better if we would have read our letter as the Downtown Business Alliance before Kara from the chamber read what their statement. But so I would like to take a moment just to read a letter on behalf of the Downtown Business Alliance that we will be submitting to the Mayor and Parker Town Council. And again, it is on the subject of town sales tax relief for bars and restaurants. So the state of Colorado has overwhelmingly approved the bipartisan-sponsored bill HB 20B-1004, allowing for bars and restaurants to retain their state sales taxes until February 21st. As representatives for the members of the Downtown Business Alliance of Parker, we are requesting the Town of Parker adopt a local version of this bill and waive town sales taxes for 120 days beginning December 1st, 2020, for bars and restaurants. So as you know, this year has been extremely challenging for our restaurants and bars. The DBA also knows the town would like to take steps to help where it can. So our restaurants and bars will be entering, and our restaurants and bars will be entering into a slow season and this would be exceedingly helpful. The increased retail sales tax the town has seen with the newfound daytime economy, the big box and grocery stores during the COVID-19 shutdown will help offset the loss in this tax revenue. So we would like to thank you for your thoughtful consideration in this issue during these unprecedented times. So, and then I guess on a personal side note, I really hope that the council will approve Resolution Number 20-063. Go team.
Thank you very much, Anne. Just like I asked with the chamber, just to make sure that clarification that your board and your members on which, whether they're asking for no taxes to be collected or if they're asking to collect taxes but retain those extra, just for clarification, that would be awesome.
No taxes to be collected.
Okay, thank you very much. Excellent. Anything else?
That will do it for the Downtown Business Alliance. Thank you so much. Appreciate your service.
Have a great night. Appreciate it. All right. Next up on the agenda is public comment. As is procedure with during the pandemic, any public comment items are posted at or submitted through ParkerOnline.org, our website. And then if there are any general public comment items, they are disseminated through council through that. So next up on our agenda is reports, items, comments from Mayor and council. John Dyak.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Cog, the past couple of weeks, we haven't been here for a few weeks. Let's see here. We had a board meeting. We went through the 2021 budgets. We also talked about the regional projects, second year delays, what that is, is that's if you get to a point and you can't efficiently stop or finish your project, you have to come back before the board. Due to COVID, there were a lot of them. So we worked through that. We had a study session dealing with a wellness fund. It was more of a public-private partnership. Diversify revenue streams is what the charge is of Dr. Cog to their various entities. So this potentially has some legs. Dr. Cog could sort of be that son, if you will, to collect different funds from private sector clients, hospitals or health organizations to piece together to create projects, programs within the area that can create some sustainability and support such as transportation and stuff. On the fourth, I had a conversation with CDOT Executive Director Shashana Lewis, I'm sorry, Shashana Lu, my apologies, Executive Director Lu regarding the Safer Main Street Program, E470. We really, really haven't had a whole lot. I've had a few phone calls relative to my Finance Committee chairmanship regarding the 2021 budget. Looking ahead to the 10th, we have, we're going to be looking at the budget. It's going to be a public hearing. And one item, we're going to recognize Commissioner Partridge. It will be his last meeting. Commissioner Partridge has been a valued member for myself personally. And you know, that as well as Dr. Cog, he has well-served our community and he is the vice chair. I am the secretary. So when he concludes his service after this meeting, I will effectively bump up to the vice chair. With that, those duties come in two-year increments. So that would be 2021 is sort of what the continuation is. And then the chair would be in 2022 and 2023. So you know, what happens every year is E470 looks for a, you know, sort of an board appointment, if you will, from the Town of Parker. So we got that sort of COVID in addition, I would assume, to Commissioner Partridge. Being term limited, me sort of transitioning up and, you know, for a continuity purpose. They're looking to have the board appointment letter sent to them as soon as possible to, again, create continuity. So just, you know, I think how we've done it is council members get to retain their positions or assignments or whatever. So I guess I'm just looking to get an AOK from the council so we can send this out, so we can respond to E470.
Okay. Anyone have any concerns with John sending it out to stay the?
Do we need a motion or?
No, it's not. I don't think we need a formal motion. Do we just?
No.
Nope. Okay. You're good. All right. Debbie?
I really don't have anything except Johnny, you've done a great job and they're lucky to have you.
At what? Can you call my wife and let her know that I've been doing a great job somewhere?
I have done that on numerous occasions. Sorry.
All right.
You know, it's my last night. I could pretty much say anything I want to.
No, I can still gavel you down.
Oh, I will hurt you.
Cheryl?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up the Greater Parker Foundation. We've had a few meetings recently looking at the formation of the entity and it's maybe some positive changes for the future that we're looking forward to. And we also recently signed some of the final year-end documents for that. So we're looking forward to a lot of discussion on that issue in the future on how it may change, where it may go. And that's kind of what we wanted to do is make it a really viable active entity within the town.
Okay.
And by the way, Danette will be helping us primarily from staff along with some other staff.
Okay. Josh?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Let's go ahead and move on to our next item, which is the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There's no separate discussion on consent agenda items unless a council member, unless, excuse me, unless council votes to remove an item for individual discussion. Ordinances on the consent agenda are for introduction only and will not be removed for further discussion. So in front of you, council, you have consent agenda items 6A through 6E.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to remove 6B from the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion from Cheryl to remove 6B. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Jeff Toborg. Do you want me to just do a voice vote on these? Or you can, can you put them in real quick? Okay. So we have a motion to remove 6B for further discussion. Council, please vote. Has everyone seen their vote?
Did you get mine?
Yeah. Not going to, all right. Josh?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Debbie?
No.
John?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. So we have 6B pulled from it. So in front of you, you have consent agenda items 6A, C, N, D, and E.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items A, C, D, and E, please.
Second.
We have a motion from Josh and we have a second from John on items 6A, C, D, and E. Josh?
Aye.
Cheryl?
No.
Jeff?
Aye.
Debbie?
Aye.
John?
Yes.
Okay, consent agenda items 6A through 6E pass with one no vote from Cheryl Pogue. So in front of you, you have consent agenda item 6B. Cheryl, you asked to have it removed. So you can either, you can make a motion or if you have further discussion, this is the time.
Yeah, I wanted to remove items, not six, which one do you want me to do? I'm talking about-
You made a motion to remove 6B.
Yes, I'd like it removed for further discussion in probably a study session.
Okay. So council, you have, so you would make a motion to remove 6B completely for further discussion later or would someone?
For further discussion later.
Okay. So we have a motion for 6B to be put to a study session, not on discussion tonight. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Cheryl and we have a second from Jeff.
Mike?
Mike.
Can I just make a-
Sure.
Ask a question. So Councilmember Pogue, is there something that maybe our staff can address tonight? Or it's just, it's too big, too big an animal, if you will?
I, if they want to address it tonight, fine. I'm questioning why the grantor is not being given liability for all or at least portions of the project.
Okay. Jim Maloney, do you?
Well, I think maybe we start with Tom giving background concerning what this is about because in this case, the grantor is the property owner of the McQueens. And the Town of Parker is requesting an easement to access their property for the purpose of installing some drainage improvements. And the consideration to support the easement is not a payment to the McQueens, but rather some improvements to their property for drainage purposes. And that's why if you take a look at the agreement, the agreement says for good and valuable consideration by grantee to grantor. And the source of these funds for the improvements to the McQueen property are not coming from the town. They're actually being funded through the developer. So Tom, I don't know if you want to go into the specifics about the project.
Sure, Jim.
Tom, just real quick, for the people at home, could you say what you do for the town?
Tom Williams, Director of Public Works and Engineering.
Thank you.
So this is a project that the town in the Mile High Flood District is doing as a fee-in-look project. It's a stabilization project on Lemon Gulch to support the development itself. The developer is paying for all the improvements. The vast majority of these improvements are on property that has been conveyed to the town as part of their development application or their plat. But to adequately construct the project, a portion of the improvements actually goes off-site of the town property or downstream of the property that the town owns. And so about $20,000 to $30,000, I think it's roughly $26,000 worth of those improvements is going to fall on Mr. McQueen's property who is downstream of the town's property. And in order to build those improvements, we have to get an easement from them. And as consideration for that easement, we are going to be stabilizing that portion of their project or their property as part of our project. They don't need to have those improvements on their property. The reason why we're doing those improvements is to tie in our project to make it a smoother transition as you go downstream. So the biggest benefit is for the town and for our project that we're doing to stabilize the majority of the gulch. But the McQueens will also benefit from having at least a portion of their drainage ways stabilized. And so rather than pay them for the easement to build those improvements, we're just building those improvements utilizing the developer's funds as a payment for that easement.
Okay.
Yeah, and I have no question with that.
Okay.
My concern is the liability that the grantor can have placed against him. Let's say there's an injury during construction on his land. There is nothing in any of the documents that I could find that relieves the landowner of liability. There is nothing in there that says, oh, if things don't go right with construction, that he's not held liable for the balance of construction cost. And that's what I'm objecting to at this point. And I think we're setting a precedent when we're, you know, working these kinds of projects but not providing the grantor with some kind of liability for these issues.
Do you want to take that, Jim?
I guess the way I would respond-
Are you turned on? You gotta, and say who you are and what you do for the town.
Town Attorney, Jim Maloney. The way I would respond is that we represent the Town of Parker. And we have gone to McQueen and said, McQueen, we need to have an interest in your property for the purposes of our project. Mr. McQueen can hire legal counsel. He can hire insurance advisors. Our job is not to assume responsibility for what should be assumed by the property owner. If we did that, we would be in a world of hurt in this town. I would say as a practical matter that this project will be insured. And if there is an event out there, certainly there would be an opportunity for Mr. McQueen to have coverage associated with an accident that would be caused by the contractor on the site. So there would be insurance and we have in our trade contractor agreements a very hefty insurance requirement to protect against accidents occur on the job by the contractor.
Yeah, but the issue I have is, yeah, the town's got coverage, but what about the grantor? I don't see that in any of the documents that I was presented to read. That's my concern.
Josh?
Jim, for the record, has the grantor signed this document already?
They have, yes.
Thank you very much, sir.
So my question is, was the grant, did the grantor, did he even think about legal advice? Or did he assume that he was dealing with the town and everything would be covered? Maybe that's not our position, but it's mine because I want to protect the public.
That wouldn't be our position. We're representing the Town of Parker right here.
We are representing the Town of Parker, but our constituents should also have adequate thought in this process.
So we have clarification on from staff on it. Cheryl, you have made a motion to hold 6B for a study council or a study session in the future. Do we have a second on that?
All right, second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Cheryl and we have a second by Jeff. Josh?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Debbie?
No.
John?
You know, I, I'm-
I'll slap you.
I'm going to say, I mean, to me, I'm going to say no because I think it's a project-specific issue. I think, I think it's from an insurance standpoint.
So motion, motion fails, motion fails with three no votes from Josh, Debbie, and John. So council in front of you, you have consent agenda item 6B. So I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve consent agenda item 6B, please, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion from Josh and we have a second from Debbie. Josh?
Aye.
Cheryl?
No.
Jeff?
Aye.
Debbie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion passes with one no vote from Cheryl Pogue. Next item up is item 7A. The seven is public hearings. Item 7A has two pieces to it. So let me read both of those in and then we'll get started with it. It's 7A is Hess Ranch Plan Development Amendment Number Three. Applicant is Front Range Communities. And you have in front of you, council, let's see here, A1 is ordinance number 3.315.3 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to amend the Hess Ranch Development Town of Parker, Colorado PD Development Guide, Second Amendment pursuant to the Town of Parker Land Development Ordinance and amending the zoning ordinance and map to conform therewith. And item A2 is the First Amendment to amended and restated Stroh Ranch-Hess Ranch Annexation Agreement, Southern Property. Now who's going to be leading us through this tonight here? Is Brianna here local or is she?
Yep, I'm on Zoom today.
I only have, oh yeah, I guess everyone only has like three windows and I didn't see you there. So how are you doing? We don't get to see the Christmas tree behind you with the Mandalorian on it. So, all right. Brianna, rock and roll.
Perfect. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. This is a proposal for a planned development amendment to both the PD Guide and the map. Next slide, please. The subject property is located generally south and west of the intersection of Stroh Road and Crowfoot Valley Road. The applicant, Front Range Communities, is requesting the approval of a zoning amendment for Segment 2A and 2B of the Hess Ranch PD. Please note, the majority of the rezoning taking place is in 2A, which is our focus this evening. Specifically, the applicant is requesting the following changes: Planning area boundary amendments, Stroh Road realignment, and partial waiver resolution compliance. Next slide, please. The applicant is requesting to amend these planning area boundaries to support the dendritic design. This subject design is a way to preserve natural features such as, features of the sites such as floodplains, drainage ways, and existing topography. The applicant has shown compliance with the required open space and community park space outlined in the annexation agreement. It is important to note that while the planning area boundaries are proposing to be reconfigured, there is no increase in the overall number of units that are currently permitted in these planning areas. Next slide, please. The applicant is requesting to realign Stroh Road to the northern border shared with Anthology North to accommodate drainage and grading needs of the site. The proposed PD shows the new proposed location of Stroh Road. Stroh Road, Chambers Road, and Spirit Trail Boulevard will provide access to the future commercial development and filings for the planned individual residential lots. All future access from these roadways will meet the town spacing criteria. Staff has reviewed and analyzed the information provided for the access and proposed relocation of Stroh Road and supports the new design. The Stroh Road realignment will not result in a change in the allowed number of residential units, required open space, or parks requirements. Next slide, please. In May of 2019, Town Council approved a partial waiver resolution to allow the applicant to develop the subject property in two segments. The first segment is generally the eastern one-third of the subject property with Segment 2 being the balance of the property. The partial waiver resolution was approved provided two obligations were met. The first being- The first being one-third of the planning areas Three, Four, Twelve, and Fourteen be developed for only commercial uses. The applicant completed the outline analysis found in the waiver resolution and has provided approximately 23 acres of commercial land within the new boundaries shown for planning areas Three and Four, outlined here in red. Whereas the remaining areas are to remain mixed-use, found in the new boundaries shown for planning areas Twelve and Fourteen. Next slide, please. The second obligation is to provide a parks, trails, and open space master plan for all neighborhood and community parks found in Segment 2A. The Hess Ranch Parks, Trails, and Open Space Master Plan shows compliance with the requirements outlined in the partial waiver resolution and the new park standards which were adopted by the town on October 19th of 2020. This plan will continue to be updated with the associated parks in 2B as they are planned and developed. Next slide, please. The general land use map within the Parker 2035 Master Plan identifies this property as being within the neighborhood center character area. This designation is intended to serve the surrounding neighborhoods by providing a variety of commercial and retail service land uses. Based on this analysis, staff has determined that the requested rezoning to meet the waiver resolution is consistent with the recommendations of the Parker 2035 Master Plan. Next slide, please. The applicant is also requesting a First Amendment to the amended and restated Stroh Ranch-Hess Ranch Annexation Amendment. There are three major changes. The first being updating the included zoning map to the proposal shown tonight. The second is the open space exhibits are being removed to allow the applicant to still meet the intent of the agreement as it relates to the amount of open space, but allowing the applicant to relocate the open space to a more logical location. The amount of required open space will remain the same, but the locations may change based on the dendritic design. The final proposed amendment is an update to the right-of-way dedication statement as it relates to the proposed Stroh Road realignment. Next slide, please. There are nine criteria used to evaluate a rezon. This criteria is used to ensure that the rezoning is consistent with the surrounding area, will not result in overuse of the land, create traffic congestion, or be detrimental to the town. Staff has determined the proposed changes better align with the nine criteria as incorporating the dendritic design preserves the existing natural areas, is compliant with the master plan, and does not change the residential densities. Next slide, please. Staff has reviewed the proposal, and as outlined in staff's report, has determined that the project is consistent with the master plan, the project satisfies the nine criteria required in the land development ordinance for a rezon, and all public notice requirements have been met. Planning Commission heard this item on November 14th of 2020 and recommended approval. Therefore, staff and Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the requested Hess Ranch Plan Development rezoning. Additionally, staff is recommending Town Council approve the requested First Amendment to the amended and restated Stroh Ranch-Hess Ranch Annexation Amendment. Staff is available for any questions council members may have, and the applicant is also present this evening to answer any questions and would like to provide a presentation for you at this time.
Wonderful, Brianna, thank you very much. Before we get to the applicant, counsel, do you have any questions for Brianna on this?
I do.
Cheryl?
Yes. Has, have all the conditions regarding meeting the requirements in the amended and restated Stroh Ranch-Hess Ranch Annexation Agreement, i.e. Southern Property from 2015, been met?
Yes, there's a number of conditions that are in the annexation. Part of that is including the open space being dedicated throughout the development, so they will continue to be required to meet those requirements. So some have been met, and the remaining conditions that are in there will be required to still be met as they move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Brianna? Okay, and who do we have from the applicant tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, my name is Matt Osborne. I represent Front Range Communities.
Okay, Matt, if you could go ahead and state your address for us as well?
Absolutely. My address is 4100 East Mississippi Avenue, Suite 500, Denver, Colorado, 80246.
Okay. Go right ahead.
All right. I'll just wait till the net pulls it up. Thank you. Well, I'll just go ahead and jump in. Again, my name is Matt Osborne. I'm representing the, my company is Front Range Communities. I'm representing the property owner, Jen Colorado 18 LLC. And as Ms. Simon eloquently outlined, we are here tonight to request the approval of the Third Amendment to the Hess Ranch PD Plan and Guide, and the Amendment to the Annexation Agreement for the property. Next slide, please. Tonight with me online and available for any questions if they should arise are the consulting team that helped put together this presentation and have been working on the Looking Glass Community, Eric McDaniel from EMK Consulting Engineers, Karen Henry from Henry Design Group, and CJ Kirsch from Tahoe Land Services. Next slide, please. Again, just some quick context for the property. Property is located south and east, or south and west of the intersection of Stroh and Crowfoot-Motzenbacher, sitting between Trails at Crowfoot to our south, Anthology to our north, and River Hess to the northwest. Total property entails 1,100 acres and just under 2,500 homes that build out. Next slide, please. The community is divided into three segments, running from east to west. Segment One was approved by Town Council, or the First Amendment to the PD, the Second Amendment I should say, incorporated Segment One, was approved by Town Council in November of 2019, and the sketch and preliminary plans for Segment One were approved in December of 2019. Next slide, please. This is just a quick review of Segment One. Stroh Road to the north, Crowfoot Valley Road to the east, Spirit Trail Boulevard to the west, and Chambers runs through the southern portion of the site. Total of 678 lots, open space of over 136 acres, and parks planned for just over 17 acres. Next slide, please. Just a quick development update. We have been underway with our site improvements since April of this year, and have made quite a bit of headway if you have not been out to drive by the site. The two photos to the left are the Chambers Bridge that will span Lemon Gulch, and then the photo on the right is the Spirit Trail Bridge spanning Brandy Gulch. We also have pavement complete for the bottom lifts on Chambers Road, Stroh Road, Spirit Trail Boulevard, and the Stroh-Crowfoot intersection. We expect to have our first final plats for Segment One recorded this month, and expect home construction to start in the late spring of 2020 months. We're excited to see some real activity happening out there in the next several months. Next slide, please. As Ms. Simon mentioned, we are asking for approval for the Third Amendment to the Hess Ranch PD Plan based on several reasons. First being the realignment of Stroh Road, also the planning area boundary adjustments that are based on some of the changes that we have made on the site based on the dendritic drainage approach that we utilized in Segment One. Also, the consolidation of the planning areas at Stroh and Chambers to address the waiver resolution. The consolidation of several park areas also is a part of that waiver resolution and our parks and trails, parks, trails, and open space plan, and the realignment of the regional trail, which is also part of that plan. Just a quick mention of the rationale for the Stroh Road realignment. As we worked through with staff and with our consulting team, we quickly recognized that the former alignment of Stroh Road that Ms. Simon reflected in her presentation had some significant challenges related to drainage and to topography. And we worked closely with staff over the last several months to realign Stroh. It makes for what we think will be much more viable commercial areas for those areas of the Stroh-Chambers intersection. And we work very closely also with the Anthology property owners to the north just to create what we think is going to be a better boundary between the two properties and a better buffer area. Next slide, please. As I mentioned also, the planning area boundary adjustments, and as Ms. Simon mentioned, many of these adjustments that are reflected in the PD Amendment are due to our extension and implementation of the dendritic drainage approach that we utilized in Segment One. And the major shifts there were part, one of them was the shift of Brandy Gulch drainage and that open space area to the south to reflect, better reflect where that drainage and some of those improvements needed to be made. And also starting to look at the impact of Oak Gulch and that drainage way to the west of Segment 2A. So those two factors, and also the more finite drainage improvements that will be done on various planning areas impacted those planning area boundaries and are part of this PD Amendment request. Next slide, please. Also, in incorporating some of those dendritic design principles and making some adjustments to the park areas based on some planning and some better understanding of what was occurring within those planning areas, also resulted in a, in request for those planning area boundary adjustments. We again think long-term this will make for a much better community, much better integration between the parks and open space areas and the various planning areas. Next slide, please. So quickly jumping into some detail, again, as Ms. Simon mentioned, to address the partial waiver resolution that was approved in May of 2019, we were required to provide a minimum of a third of the developable area of the planning areas at Stroh and Chambers intersection to be dedicated as commercial on a minimum of two planning area sites. Our analysis resulted in these two commercial parcels on the west is about a 20-acre site, just over 20 acres, and on the east is just under four acres. Again, this meets the one-third requirement, and those remaining planning areas will retain their mixed-use zoning designation. Next slide, please. As Ms. Simon walked through in her presentation, this is a conceptual plan that led to our revisions on the planning area boundaries in those commercial areas. A much more detailed planning analysis will be provided at future stages of the town's review process. So again, very conceptual as it relates to the commercial and residential, and you'll see a lot more details as we move through the process. Next slide, please. The other part of the waiver resolution was a requirement to develop a parks, trails, and open space plan. We worked through that on Segment One, and as we moved into Segment 2A and touched on Segment 2B, needed to make some amendments to that plan. And we worked very collaboratively with our team and staff to produce a guiding document for the community. And I just want to walk quickly through a couple of the components of that plan and how they impacted the PD Plan. First was on the trail system. As you may remember, in Segment One, we have the extension of the regional trail from the intersection of Stroh-Crowfoot-Motzenbacher extends through the site and eventually catches or connects to the Lemon Gulch drainage and the Brandy Gulch drainage. What we reflect here is an amendment to that trail, that regional trail. The old PD had that trail running along the south boundary of the community. We have realigned that in the Brandy Gulch drainage and eventually tying into the Oak Gulch drainage. We think this provides a much better access to the park areas that are aligned along Brandy Gulch, to the school, future school site along Brandy Gulch, and a greater number of the planning areas. This slide also just reflects a hierarchy of trails that will be a part of the plan, and a lot more detail will be provided in these various planning areas as we move through sketch and preliminary plan and how they tie into the broader trail connectivity system. Next slide, please. The next piece, again, working through with town staff was the parks and how they are tied into the parks, trails, and open space plan. As you can see, we have a very extensive park and open space plan that will provide a tremendous amenity for the Looking Glass community as well as the surrounding area. Total park area that you see reflected here is just over 76 acres. That far exceeds the annexation agreement requirement of 50 acres and what the land development ordinance would require at just under 60 acres. Additionally, in addition to that 76 acres of parkland, there will be 285 acres of open space, which also exceeds the annexation agreement requirement. Next slide, please. This provides a detail on the community park that we plan to build in the center of the community. It's a combination of two park areas that straddle Chambers Road from the Second Amendment to the PD Plan. We feel like this is a much better utilization of the park acreage. Creates one large park featuring a very nice direct connection to the regional trail and the Brandy Gulch open space. There'll be a neighborhood pool and large active and passive areas. The total park area in this plan will be just under 26 acres. And if you add up the adjacent open space areas, it'll be a total of 38 acres in this very centralized location with Chambers Road just to the west, Spirit Trail Boulevard just to the south. So we really feel like this will be a very unique central park area that'll provide a grand amenity, not just for the Looking Glass community, but for the broader community of Parker. Next slide, please. This just provides an overall reflection of the plan. Again, Segment One, which this council has approved in the past to the right. The Segment 2A as well is reflected. The sketch and preliminary plans for 2A are currently in process and will likely be in front of Town Council in early 2021. So there are some more opportunities to review the detail as we move further into the process. Next slide, please. So again, the consolidated PD Amendment Plan, the Third Amendment to the Hess Ranch PD Plan, reflecting all the changes that I've mentioned. Next slide, please. So again, those key revisions, the realignment to Stroh Road, the planning area boundary adjustments based primarily on the dendritic drainage approach, the consolidation of the mixed-use planning areas at Stroh-Chambers intersection to achieve the requirements of the waiver resolution. Additionally, the consolidation of park areas and the realignment of the regional trail that were part of the parks, trails, and open space plan that was also a part of that waiver resolution. So, next slide, please. So I would request Town Council's approval of the Third Amendment to the Hess Ranch PD Plan and Guide, and the Amendment to the Annexation Agreement based on the criteria outlined by Ms. Simon. I would like to just thank planning staff, and particularly Ms. Simon. She jumped into this process late in the game and has had to play a lot of catch-up, and it's really, we really appreciate all the efforts that she's made throughout this process. Engineering staff as well, Alex Mestow has been our main contact there. Park staff, Alex Eaton and Dennis Trapp. Legal staff, Kristen Hoffman. I did want to just also acknowledge Larry Jacobson, who was a key part. He's been my partner on this, on this community from day one and was an integral part of the development of this plan going forward. He's moved on to develop some other master plan communities, but his footprint or his fingerprint is definitely on this community. So I just wanted to acknowledge him. And I think just to step back and to say, these kinds of master plan communities are only successful if they're really a true collaboration of all the stakeholders that are involved. And this has really been a highly collaborative effort with our team and with the town staff. And we really appreciate all the efforts of everybody involved. There's a lot of detail that goes into this broad overview, and you're getting a quick view of it, but suffice to say, your staff has done a fantastic job in bringing this, what we think will be a great community for, for the town of Parker and something in which all of you can be very proud. So thank you to you, Mayor, and Town Council for all your efforts as well. Thank you.
Matt, thank you very much for the presentation. Before we go to public comment, counsel, do you have any questions for Matt? Cheryl?
Yes, Matt, I have a couple of questions. One regards the larger central park that you're proposing. Does that vacate the smaller neighborhood parks?
No, that actually combined two park areas that were reflected in the PD. Two larger parks, so that it still achieves or exceeds any of the minimum requirements as it relates to community parks, and we will have to achieve any requirements as it relates to neighborhood parks. But that combined two community parks, if you will, into one. relates to neighborhood parks, but that combined two community parks, if you will, into one.
Yeah, and that kind of removes the dispersment of parks throughout the subdivision, so that would be one of my concerns. The other concern is just a question. With your proposed realignment of Stroh Road from Chambers, I'm assuming to the west then, how does that align with the existing Stroh Road to the east?
It, it's, it's a connection, so there will be no, essentially what would have happened is the current Stroh Road that is east of our property extends onto our property up to Spirit Trail Boulevard. That, that portion is now constructed on our property. That has not changed from the original PD. The area that, or that section that will change will be the area from what we've now developed on our site further to the west through, through, all the way to the west portion of our property. So there'll be no impact east of the property on existing Stroh, east of the Crowfoot-Matzenbacher intersection. The only impacts are on our site.
Thank you.
Other questions, Cheryl?
No, thank you.
Josh, did you have a question?
No, I just, I think maybe for the record, we could state that this is the original alignment of Stroh Road. The previous owner to the gentleman here asked to align the road to the south, and now we are back aligning the road to what we consider the proper alignment.
The original one, yeah. Other questions?
No, I have a comment, not a question. And I was going to say, Matt, where were you in 1996? And then I realized you were in middle school, so I guess that's not a question.
Ouch. Ouch. Ninety-six, middle school. I see where I got married.
Well, yeah, I know the age difference.
John, did you have a question?
Yeah, no, no, I mean, just more of a comment. I mean, you know, to, to Matt, I mean, thank, thank you for, for working with staff and, you know, I appreciate all the, all the work, yourself, Larry as well, and the rest of your team have, have put into this. The plans look great. Looking forward to seeing it actualized, so thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to go ahead and open it up for public comment at 7:54 PM. If there's anyone here on the Zoom meeting wishing to have comment on this item, please use your raise your hand feature. Jeanette, do you see anybody?
There are no public comments.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment at 7:54 PM. And council, before you, you have two items. Josh?
I just wanted to, one more comment if I could, before we get into the motions. Again, I echo what Councilman Dyak said, Matt, it's been a, a great project. I, I think the collaboration between your organization and the town organization was exceptional. The park, I know we, we butted heads a little bit there, but I think we came out for the better. Obviously, I get to say it one last time, but the dendritic development of your, of your neighborhood
That's seven.
Is absolutely outstanding, and I am, I am truly, truly proud to vote on this. I will echo again what Debbie said. I know personally what you can do for a neighborhood, and I look forward to seeing what this neighborhood develops into. So thank you, Mr. Osborne. I appreciate you being a part of this, this group.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so council, before you, you have two items, so I need motions on each item.
I move to approve ordinance number three point three one five point three on second reading.
Second. We have a motion from Debbie, and we have a second from Josh. Motion passes unanimously, and you have the next item, which is A2.
I move to approve the first amendment and restated Stroh Ranch-Hess Ranch annexation agreement, southerly property. I really like that. Based on staff findings, subject to approval of ordinance number three point three one five point three.
Second. Motion by Debbie, and we have a second by Josh. In just a sec, Chris will put it through, and council, please vote.
I've seen anybody vote.
Has anybody?
We, we all voted.
Has anybody gotten windows yet on this one?
I did. I voted.
I did.
And I saved it.
Okay, Josh?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Debbie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Before we go up to the next item, just to clarify, Councilman Rivera was kind enough to point out something that I think missed everyone's sets of, sets of eyes on this, but at least on the printed copy we have, it has a Oldie Town at Parker location generally on the south and west intersection of Stroh Road and Crowfoot Valley,
And that may be crazy.
Which is the one we just did. I don't think Oldie Valley's in that spot or Oldie, Oldie Town.
Old Town.
I call it Old Town, but like a few meetings ago, everybody called it Oldie.
No, that's not how they pronounce.
It's Maloney's the one who messed this up. I think was rule number one when I got elected was don't listen to Jim Maloney. No, I'm just kidding, Jim. So Old Town, let's go ahead and wait a sec
It was don't correct.
Because Councilman Toborg stepped out for a sec, and so what should it read on there then? The official?
So, the Old Town at Parker PD should be generally located south of Main Street in between Matzenbacher and Jordan Road.
Yep.
All right.
At least we know, we know where we are.
Yes, so sorry about that.
No worries, no worries. Well, Stacy, let's go ahead and get started. I'm sure Jeff has seen the packet, so.
All right.
Let me, I gotta read it in because we got an item. Sorry about that. I got all distracted there. It's only taken me eight years to figure it out. This is item number seven B, Old Town at Parker. B1 is ordinance number three dot one six two dot four on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to amend the second amendment to the Old Town at Parker Plan Development Guide and Plan pursuant to the Town of Parker Land Development Ordinance and amending the zoning ordinance and map to conform therewith. Rock and roll.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council members. This evening, the applicant is requesting an amendment to the Old Town at Parker Plan Development. This will add an additional 12 acres to the development to allow for single-family attached residential uses or townhomes. The proposed, the proposal before you tonight is a zoning amendment only. Details for the layout and look or the elevations of the proposed townhomes will be evaluated in a future application submittal. Next slide, please. The site is located on the south side of Main Street between Jordan Road and Matzenbacher Road. The overall Old Town at Parker Plan Development is outlined in red above. The site is bounded on the east by the American Academy at Matzenbacher and to the west by the Main Street Dental Plaza Commercial Development. To the north of the site is the Clark Farms Single Family Residential Neighborhood, and to the south is the Old Town Cinderous Creek Neighborhood that is currently under construction. The proposed PD amendment, which is highlighted in blue above, will add 12.16 unplatted acres located north of the original development, which were annexed into the town in 2014. The 12.16 acres would be zoned Planning Area Nine and would allow for single-family attached townhome development for a total of 122 units at a density of 10 units per acre. The two commercial lots and the adjacent drainage area are currently located in Planning Area One and are designated as Commercial Center. This area will remain largely unchanged in terms of use, with the exception of the 1.86 acre portion of the drainage tract mentioned above. This drainage area will be reclaimed, redesigned, and incorporated into the new residential planning areas. Next slide, please. The Old Town at Parker property was annexed in 2000 with a PD zoning that provided for 5.5 acres commercial area, 595 residential units, and a series of parks. In 2003, the PD was amended and a sketch and preliminary plan was approved that enlarged the commercial area to 13.35 acres. The commercial area is shown here inside the red squares. This commercial area includes the access drive and adjacent drainage swill on the east boundary of the planning area shown here shaded in blue. The residential development under the PD was also reorganized to create a Central Park and Community Center area within the Old Town project. Construction of the western half of the PD ceased in 2008 with the economic downturn. In 2017, the eastern half of the original development was approved for single-family detached and paired homes. Plating of this area completed the original subdivision and is currently under construction. Next slide, please. On August 3, 2020, town council considered a rezoning for this property that proposed 108 condominium units and 48 single-family attached residential units. The proposal at the time included a maximum height of 45 feet for the condominiums and a maximum density of 17 dwelling units per acre. The proposed increase in height was 10 feet higher than the surrounding zoning, and the density was greater than the rest of the planning areas in the PD. Town council denied the previous request based on the requested height and density. The applicant's current proposal maintains the same maximum height as the existing Old Town PD and the Clark Farms PD to the north. The proposed use and density aligns with the existing density allowed within the Old Town PD. Next slide, please. The 12.16 acre site that will be added to the Old Town at Parker development is currently vacant and zoned agricultural. Structures on the site include an abandoned house that will be demolished and a communications tower that will remain. Next slide, please. The proposal is consistent with the Parker 2035 Master Plan, which identifies this area as medium-density residential and within a neighborhood center. The medium-density residential designation recommends an overall density of 3.5 dwelling units per acre, while the neighborhood center designation allows for higher density when applied in a mixed-use walkable development. This project integrates commercial uses with adjacent residential and recreational uses through pedestrian-oriented alternative access routes, creating a sense of community among those who work, live, and play within this neighborhood. Next slide, please. The current Old Town PD allows 4.51 dwelling units per acre. The proposed PD amendment will result in an increase to an overall density of 5.02 dwelling units per acre. The proposed 12.16 additional acres will have a maximum density of 10 units per acre. Currently, planning areas two and three of the existing PD allows for densities similar to what is being proposed. In addition, the maximum height for the new planning area will be limited to 35 feet, which is consistent with the other planning areas within the PD. Next slide, please. There are nine criteria used to evaluate a rezoning. These criteria are used to ensure that the rezoning is consistent with the surrounding area, will not result in an overuse of the land, create traffic congestion, congestion, or be detrimental to the town. Next slide, please. The proposed PD amendment aligns with the permitted densities in other planning areas of the Old Town PD. This will not change the density in any of the existing planning areas, but will increase the overall density in the PD by about a half a dwelling unit per acre. Future applications for site development will require to meet the town landscaping, open space, and park dedication requirements. This proposal is consistent with the Parker 2035 Master Plan, which identifies this area as medium-density residential and within a neighborhood center. The uses, density, and overall design considerations recommended for this district are consistent with the proposed PD and with the nine approval criteria for rezoning requests. All referral agency comments have been addressed. The public notice requirements have been satisfied. The applicant did hold two neighborhood meetings before this hearing, and the Planning Commission heard this request on November 12, 2020, and recommended unanimous approval. Therefore, staff and the Planning Commission recommend town council approve the Old Town at Parker PD Guide Third Amendment. The applicant, Norris Desine, has a presentation and is present to answer any questions. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions as well.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Stacy, before we get to the applicant, council, do you have any questions for Stacy?
Oh, I always have questions.
Cheryl.
So in looking at this, the max, medium-density residential designation would normally allow a density of 3.5 dwelling units per acre. And when I calculated this, I come up with almost four to five dwelling units per acre. Is that what, am I looking at this correctly?
You are looking at it correctly. So, right now, the Old Town at Parker PD allows for just over four and a half units per acre, and what they're proposing to include would then increase the density to just over five, 5.02 units per acre. And so it is in the medium-density residential, which is three and a half units per acre designation of the master plan, but it's also in that neighborhood center. And with that neighborhood center, it's kind of a bubble at these major intersections that we see within the town, so that's being Main Street and Jordan Road. And what we see is those are most likely going to be the corners, the hard corner's going to be your commercial, and as you move further back from those commercial corners, you're going to get into residential. And that higher-density residential is permitted within those neighborhood centers to kind of create that transition from commercial to your single-family detached residential and to create those walkable neighborhoods. So that's why you're seeing a density greater than the 3.5 units per acre, because it's also within that neighborhood center designation.
Okay, thank you. I didn't see that explanation in here, and that's why I was asking.
Okay, other questions?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
If the applicant is here, we can go ahead and promote him or her. I'm not sure who the applicant is here. There we go, Bill, there you are.
Bill Maher.
All right, Bill, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please, and then you can jump into your presentation.
Great, good evening. My name is Bill Maher, and my working address is 1101 Vannick Street, Denver, Colorado, 80204.
Okay.
Good evening, mayor and council members. As I mentioned, my name is Bill Maher, and with Norris Desine, and I'm here tonight to present on this PD amendment request to the Old Town at Parker PD and address any questions you may have. And we, we recognize you've heard some of this presentation before earlier this summer, and we will be as brief as we can during this presentation. Next slide, please. Tonight, I'm joined by Brian Beiler, the applicant and property owner, and he will be speaking later in this presentation, as well as members of the project team listed on the slide in front of you. Next slide, please. So what has changed since our original application? First of all, we heard your comments and took them to heart, and we heard the comments of the neighborhood residents. We had two meetings that were very productive and very good dialogue at both meetings with our many neighborhood residents. As Ms. Nurgur commented, we have submitted a new application. We have removed the condominium use, and we have changed the overall density. Originally, we had between 15 to 17 dwelling units per acre at about 156 dwelling units on the site, and now we are at 10, which is comparable to the other adjacent PD areas, and with a total number of units of 122. Next slide. And timeline of neighborhood development, we've been working on the Cinderous Creek Neighborhood for quite some time, since 2016, and Mr. Beiler, the property owner, has been committed for the long term. As you see in this slide, it shows you when these other planning areas were approved that are now under construction. We started working on it in 2016. Next slide. And during that time, we've been working hand-in-hand with the Homeowners Association and Neighborhood District and many members of the neighborhood. From 2016 to 2019, we had over six neighborhood meetings during that time, and most recently, we had completion of the neighborhood pool, which was an unmet obligation of the original developer back in 2003, and we are very proud to see that completed. We have also been working on drainage improvements that will benefit not only the Cinderous Creek Neighborhood, but also the neighborhoods to the north, Clark Farms, by the improvements to the, to the stormwater detention ponds that we are proposing. And Mr. Beiler has moved forward with landscaping enhancements. There are a number of trees that were damaged over the years since the original developer walked away in 2008, and we planted over 100 trees within the larger neighborhood that weren't part of our original requirement. And we, we are very proud of these neighborhood improvements. Next slide. As I mentioned, one of the shining stars of this overall project was the recent completion of this fall of the neighborhood pool, which the neighborhood residents have been waiting for many years to see complete. And now this is in the hands and owned by the Metro District and Homeowners Association. We are quite proud how it turned out. Next slide. And this is a slide of the existing conditions. This parcel, as Ms. Nurgur appointed, is a last-large tract that is undeveloped within this larger neighborhood, and we, we really look forward to transforming it, transforming this agricultural land into part of the neighborhood that will complete the neighborhood and results in a very attractive addition to the overall neighborhood. Next slide. And in summary, as Ms. Nurgur mentioned, we had two neighborhood meetings, had good attendance at both, October 7th, October 28th. We recently received approval from the Planning Commission, and upon approval of this PD amendment, we will be submitting a sketch and preliminary, the subdivision drawings in December, and a site plan submittal for the townhome development in 2021. Next slide, please. And as Ms. Nurgur pointed out, the overall density in 2003 was 5.07 units per acre. In 2017, there was an amendment that we were involved with, and it went down to 4.20. And now with the addition of the 12.16 acres of land, the overall density that we are planning to build out is at 4.75. So as you see, even with this addition of land and more units, we are coming in overall with a overall lower density of what we intend we are coming in overall with an overall lower density of what we intend to build. Next slide, please. And joining me tonight is a member of the Metropolitan District. And he is asked to speak tonight. He's been involved with this project from the start and been helpful in the overall negotiations and financing with the pool project. Mike, would you like to speak?
Yes, please. Yeah. Thanks, Bill. I'm Mr. Mayor and Town Council. So, my name is Mike Imro. I live at 11364 South Trailmaster Circle. And as Bill has mentioned, I am the treasurer of the Metro District, and I am also the treasurer on the Master Associations Board for Newtown. We've been working with Bill and Brian, the owner of the property, since 2016. So, the Metro District, as you probably know, was in financial... Not in a good financial position. We were able to refinance the bonds for the Metro District. And by refinancing the bonds, we included this property in the refinancing of those bonds. So, we were able to get more funds to get more community amenities as a result of that. And those bonds were refinanced in 2018. And as a result, the Metro District is on better financial footing as a result. And as... So, we were able to get a larger pool complex as a result of that bond refinancing as well. And also, the extra additional amenities of landscaping that will be... That has been provided, and there's additional funds to provide more come springtime. So, as being on both the Metro District and the Master Association Board, we have both provided a letter to... That has, I believe, has been provided to the town in support of this project moving forward for... As the Metro District and the Homeowners Association, both boards are fully in support of this project moving forward. So, I appreciate your time, and I'll be happy to answer if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next slide, please. And Mr. Beiler, the property owner and applicant, would also like to speak briefly. Brian?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thanks for taking a look at this project tonight. I think this is the final piece of the puzzle, so to speak. We... This 12 acres has helped, as Michael had stated, refinance the Metro District and the default that had been going on for a lot of years, help provide the funds to finish and complete the pool. The development funds that were set aside as part of the development on the other property that we were involved with helped complete the roadway along Matzenbacher, and all that works completed. And I think this is the last part of the development that we're anxious to get your approval on tonight so that we can complete the project.
Thank you, Brian. Next slide, please. Throughout this process, we really want to thank many of the neighborhood residents we engaged with and that attended the two public meetings in October. Their input and the input that we received from you, Mayor, and council members was really helpful for us to regroup, relook at this project, and come back with something that we all feel fits the site better. And we're very excited about it, and we are happy to answer any questions you may have. But before I go, I want to thank the staff, Stacy Nurgur, Carolyn Parkinson, and Bryce Matthews, Tyler Sands, for all of their help and assistance in helping us through this process. Thank you.
Bill, thank you very much, and Mike and Brian, thank you as well for participating in that presentation. Before we go to public comment, council, do you have any questions for Bill? John?
Mr. Maher, you mentioned there were two neighborhood meetings, and, you know, I could just maybe guess what the sentiment was, but I'm going to ask the question. What was the sentiment of the neighborhood meetings? You know, I think the big thing was to eliminate the condos, which he did. But what additional changes or other tweaks did he do within the plan to kind of appeal to the neighborhood comment?
Good question. Well, I felt the neighborhood meetings were very productive, first of all. We were very open to their comments and suggestions, and we made it very clear that we heard their concerns about the condominiums. And we pulled that out of the application. And we also changed the density to be much lower, to be in line with the other planning areas that are existing within their neighborhood. We also changed the height to be consistent throughout the entire neighborhood. 35 feet is the maximum height within that entire neighborhood, all the way from Jordan Road, Matzenbacher, Main Street, down to Hes. So, by making those changes, I believe many of the neighborhood residents felt that this would be a compatible PD amendment rezoning, because it reflects the same type of zoning requirements that are already existing in the neighborhood. We did talk about that as we move forward past the zoning, once we get into the site plan, that would be... We'd be open for more neighborhood meetings with them. And we talked about with townhomes, since it's considered technically a multifamily product by your code, that comes with that are certain requirements that add protection to the neighborhood. So, if we came in and requested single-family detached homes, like most of the homes in the neighborhood, the homes that are existing in Clark Farms on the north and the homes that are under construction on the south are single-family homes. And if we propose single-family detached, we would only be required to place them 10 feet apart per setback. When it's considered a town home, we have to provide a 40-foot minimum setback. But we are... At our neighborhood meeting, we stated to them that we are looking at a minimum of 60-foot setback from the homes on Clark Farms and the homes, the residential homes on the south. And we also let them know that with townhomes, there are architectural requirements that are required. You have a very good design guideline manual that we are required to follow. And with the inclusion of townhomes, we have greater setbacks, and we have architecture and more landscaping requirements that we have to abide by. And we plan to go above and beyond the open space and landscape requirements that are required. So, I think those things reassured many of the neighbors, and we received a lot of positive comments overall at those meetings. And I know there's some representatives from the neighborhood on this call tonight, and perhaps they can join in and share some of their perspective. Thank you.
John, any questions?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Council? Okay. We're going to go ahead and open it up for public comment at 8:19 PM. If you're here for public comment on this item and you're on the Zoom call, please use your raise-your-hand feature. I see that we've already got three hands up, so I'm going to go through and give the explanation of how this is going to work while Danette's taking the order of them. There's a three-minute time limit. You'll start by saying your name and address for the record, and then I'll hit the clock. You can't see it because it's above my head, and I don't think the camera can pick it up. But there is a timer that will be going down or that will be counting down. And when it gets to within 30 seconds of three minutes, I will let you know that you have 30 seconds left. And then, when it gets to three minutes, I'll thank you and move on to the next public comment presenter. So, with that, Danette, do we have the first one ready to roll?
Yes, Corey Wilks.
Okay. All right. Corey, if you could go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Hi, Corey Wilks. I'm at 17402 East Newtown Parkway, Parker 80134. I just wanted to reiterate that Bill Maher and team have done a great job of communicating since the last meeting and that, as a resident, I am in support of this amendment, whatever you want to call it. I'm in support of it. Long story short, what we were suffering from was a lot of things. One in particular is just a lot of traffic and parking. And what was important to us, or me, I shouldn't speak for myself, I suppose, is that we had two-car garages, that every house has a two-car garage. And I know we're getting a little bit ahead of where we were going, but that's the... That was their promise to us, was that each home would have a two-car garage to help us with our parking problem. And that's what... That is the problem that we face, among others. But that's one in particular, and I feel like they've solved that. And as a resident, I'm in support. So...
Okay. Corey, thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. Danette, who do we have next up?
Sarah Lubchenko.
Okay. Sarah, if you can go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Fantastic. Hi, this is Sarah Lubchenko, 17474 East Newtown Parkway. Thank you all for your time and energy tonight. I will echo thanks that the developer heard our outstanding concerns and eliminated the condos from the design. I will say that it was a surprise that our HOA board sent a letter supporting this development. I don't believe I saw any correspondence that was happening on our behalf. I think the community generally still has some concerns that will be addressed as we see closer to a final design for the community, namely touching on traffic, parking, access to private roads that aren't maintained by the town of Parker. So, I look forward to seeing those final designs that, again, we'll see probably in the next public comment period. But I do appreciate the increased communication from the builder. But there are still community concerns that I just wanted to reiterate to the group. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Okay. Danette, who do we have up next? Okay. Ian, if you'd state your name and address for the record, please.
Ian Elfenner, 15750 East Indian Brook Circle. I just wanted to take a moment to say that it looks like they're doing a pretty great project here. Based on what I've seen thus far, it'd be really nice to see the donut and the hole filled in, for lack of a better term. So, kudos, and looking forward to see it move forward. However, I think now would be a good time to bring up some issues with the surrounding property, albeit it's not tied exactly to this, but it will be interconnected in some way, shape, or form. So, the project at the southeast corner of Main Street and Jordan, the existing shopping center is in... Access roads are in disrepair. Potholes are really bad. Mike Wade, you're well aware of this. We've communicated about this previously. I know that the owner of that property has been summoned, I think, to court, if I'm not mistaken. And, you know, I think, you know, as things move forward and things progress, trying to figure out a resolution for that existing commercial access and making sure that that's taken care of is a good thing, because ultimately, it's going to impact this project that's being proposed and the additional traffic that's going to be in and throughout the area. So, please keep that on your radar going forward. And great project, Pacific North. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And let's see, do we have one more?
Kayla, yes.
Okay. And you said it was Kayla?
Correct.
Okay. Kayla, if you could go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please. Is she... She's still muted? I can't see her on here.
Oops, sorry. I got it. Can you guys hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kayla Willzek, and I live at 17182 East Cedar Gulch Drive. And I would like to echo the sentiments that Sarah expressed. I am very grateful that the developer came through and amended some of their ideas and created a more functional idea for our neighborhood. I think it does fit a lot better. However, I still have concerns that they do not have our community's interest at heart and trying to keep our community interest involved. Although they have been better about communication to our community, I came to them at these meetings with fairly specific questions in hopes to get answers to some of them, and I still feel like they were very evasive and gave very vague answers. So, I'm still not completely on board, thinking that they have our community interest at their heart. And then, like Sarah said, I was completely unaware that our HOA was sending a letter on my behalf saying that I was in support of this, so that is a little concerning. But beyond that, I mostly fall in line with what Sarah had to say, that I am appreciative towards their efforts, but I don't think that they're making the max effort to be fully incorporated into our community. So, I guess that would be my only comments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And Danette, can we confirm no other public comment?
That's correct. No other comments.
Okay. We'll go ahead and close public comment at 8:27 PM. And council in front of you, you have ordinance... If you have B1, which is ordinance number 3.162.4 on second reading, I would entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 3.162.4 on second reading, please.
Second.
We have a motion from Josh, and we have a second from Debbie. Council, please vote. Are we waiting on anybody, or?
It's not coming up.
Okay. Josh?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Debbie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Next item in front of you is item 7C, Chase Bank. There's three items that are specific to this. We'll have, again, one presentation, but there are three separate items. The three items are C1, used by special review to allow a drive-through. Item C2 is Chase Bank Minor Development Plat. And item C3 is subdivision agreement. And this is a... This is an area that's located at the southwest corner of Parker Road and Main Street. Oh, yes. Go right ahead, Stacy.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, again. So, this evening, the applicant is requesting a use by special review to allow for a bank drive-through and a minor development plat to create 1 0.613-acre commercial lot. The applicant has also submitted a site plan application, which is being reviewed concurrently, but will be approved administratively. Next slide, please. So, the subject site is located at the southwest corner of Parker Road and Main Street. The site is located within the Greater Downtown District Town Center zoning. The applicant is requesting three applications. The first application is a use by special review to allow for a single-lane drive-through ATM associated with the bank use proposed on the property. The second application is a minor development plat to create 1 0.613-acre commercial lot, 1 0.103-acre tract for additional right-of-way along Main Street from two existing meets-and-bounds legal descriptions. And then, the third application is a subdivision agreement to secure the construction of the required public improvements. So, the subject site was annexed into the town of Parker in 1984 as part of two separate annexation applications.
Can you say that one more time? I think this is the first... This is the oldest one that you've read in when something's been annexed in.
I know.
1984.
1984.
Crazy.
So, the existing vacant gas station was constructed on the property in 1987. In 2003, the property was rezoned to become part of the Greater Downtown District, a zoning comprised of five sub-districts, in this case, the Town Center Subdistrict. The gas station on the property has been closed for approximately five years. The proposed use by special review is to allow for a single-lane drive-through ATM associated with the bank use proposed on the property. The proposed bank is a use permitted by right. However, the proposed drive-through facility is listed as a use by special review within the Greater Downtown District Town Center zoning. The drive-through is proposed to be located at the far southwest corner of the property, which is highlighted in purple on this map. This proposal is consistent with the Parker 2035 Master Plan, which identifies the property within the Main Street Master Plan character area. The proposed bank will be constructed along Main Street with parking and drive-through located on the south side of the property. The drive-through component is a drive-up ATM that is located at the far southwest corner of the property, so this project will limit any negative impacts on the surrounding community and services. The bank facility is classified as an office use or financial service, which is generally consistent with the master plan. Although the proposed use is not an active commercial use, it is possible for the applicant to activate the property to meet the intent of the plan. The proposal has a two-story massing, will include an active Main Street frontage that includes the larger sidewalk and entrance into the building, as well as reserves the westerly portion of the property for a future commercial addition to address the Main Street Master Plan recommendation for first-floor active uses on Main Street. The proposed minor development plat will create 1.613-acre commercial light lot... The proposed minor development plat will create 1.613 acre commercial light lot that is outlined in red, and 1.103 acre tract for additional rideaway along Main Street. The proposed plat meets all requirements of the Town Land Development Order, ordinance and the Greater Downtown District Town Center zoning regulations. The proposed minor development plat includes two dedications to the town. The first dedication is additional rideaway along Main Street, this is outlined in blue, to provide a continuous right turn lane from eastbound Main Street to southbound Parker Road. The second dedication is a sign easement, this is highlighted in purple, along the Parker Road frontage to allow the town to install a Parker Downtown sign. The applicant was asked to contribute towards half of the contribution cost of the sign, but declined to contribute. There are nine criteria used to evaluate a use by special review. These criteria are used to ensure that the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding area, will not result in an overuse of the land, create traffic congestion, or be detrimental to the town. The proposed drive-through ATM meets the nine criteria. To address a few, the drive-through ATM use will be one of six drive-through facilities located near this intersection. The use is not anticipated to generate significant traffic volumes or lead to congestion, which might result in undue traffic hazards. In addition, the applicant will be dedicating additional rideaway along Main Street for a future right turn lane. The proposed use will demolish the existing vacant gas station, which consists of two structures and replace it with one building. As part of the demolition, the applicant will remove the existing underground fuel storage tanks. The applicant has been monitoring the groundwater and soil for any contamination and will be required to continue to monitor for any contamination throughout the demolition process. Although the town will require a grading permit through Public Works Engineering and a permit through Fire Life Safety for this work, the ultimate review authority is with the state of Colorado. The proposed Chase Bank with drive-through facility will clean up the existing southwest corner of Main Street and Parker Road by removing the existing vacant gas station. The proposed development will include many benefits to the town of Parker, including the dedication of additional rideaway along Main Street, the dedication of a sign easement to allow for the town of Parker Downtown sign at this prominent intersection, additional sidewalk connections and landscaping. The impacts created by the proposed single lane drive-through ATM will be mitigated by locating it at the southwest corner of the property and screening it from view with the building and landscaping. After evaluating the information provided by the applicant for the use by special review, staff has determined that the requested use meets the nine approval criteria set forth in Land Development Ordinance. All referral agency comments have been addressed. The public notice requirements have been satisfied. And the Planning Commission heard this case on November 12, 2020 and recommended unanimous approval. Therefore, staff and the Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the Chase Bank Minor Development Plat, the subdivision agreement, and the use by special review to allow a drive-through facility subject to the three conditions contained within the staff report. The applicant, Stan Tech, has a presentation and is present tonight to answer any questions you may have. This concludes staff's presentation and I'm available for any questions as well.
Stacy, thank you very much for that, counsel. Do you have any questions for Stacy before we get to the applicant?
Yes, ma'am, or yes, sir.
All right, I think that's the first time I've been called ma'am.
I was looking at Stacy's stuff.
That's all right.
Sorry about that.
Go ahead, Cheryl.
I'm very concerned. Because I'm not opposed to the project, but what was presented to us in our staff documents was nothing. Blank files, and what did come through, it said private, or notes private. Interesting, right?
That is interesting. So are you saying the attachments to your staff report wouldn't open?
Or blank. For me and for Jeff, and one that I did see, or two of them, said notes private.
So I, I'll say mine took a little bit to load, but they eventually popped up.
I've been trying to load them the whole night here and they're not opening. So I, I'm assuming there's nothing there.
Let's take a quick peek here and see.
There are files in there, but I don't know what happened.
See here.
Where did you see notes private?
I just pulled it in and loaded up minor development plats. I mean, I, they're there for me.
Well, there certainly weren't opening for me and I've been trying for, since yesterday and today.
Well, I, when I looked through the files when we got our notice last, because these came out, Chris, you posted these on Thursday, which is when they're normally, yeah, I, I checked mine out then, I didn't, I was able to get through everything. Did anybody else have any issues getting to their files?
Nothing there.
I haven't gotten mine, but.
Okay. So do you have a, a specific question or you're just saying?
Well, I was just wondering if there was a reason why, because I didn't see anything. And I look at these and I didn't see anything. I'm not opposed to the project, but.
Michelle, were you able to get your files as well and?
So there must be something wrong with your link or your connection because we would not have put this item on the agenda without all the packet. And that's what Jim Maloney and Town Clerk's Office and myself, we do, we review it all.
The only note I saw was notes private, so.
This planning staff packet is in here, the planning staff report, which is 17 pages, as well as the exhibit and the subdivision agreement is 22 pages and those are all there. If you have problems over the weekend or anything, accessing your packet and getting these documents, you know, please let the town clerks in my office do.
I wasn't sure why this was occurring because it wasn't opened up.
Yeah, the exhibit, I think, and I'm doing it again, it's, it's taking a while to load, but it eventually definitely loads.
Okay.
So I do have a question real quick.
Question, go ahead, Josh.
I can't bring, oh, here it comes. So the right-in-only off of Main, does that maintain or are we, it stays on?
Yes. So the right-in-only off of Main Street into the site will be maintained.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions before we go to the?
I do, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Cheryl.
Cheryl?
My question is that right-in, is that the street that's been basically closed off behind Needers to the east of Needers?
Yes, it is the.
So you're going to now make that and allow that as a right-in?
It is a right-in-only, so you can only get into the site, you cannot get out there.
Jeff? So then the, the continuous right onto Parker Road, are, are we, are we taking sidewalk and pushing that back? And how far are we?
Yes, so the applicant will be dedicating additional land to the town for that access point.
Okay.
To create that lane, which will move the property line of this actual lot back or south onto the site.
South, okay. So then, so then you'll have the right turn in there, but then you can follow that to continue on to Parker Road and protected? I mean, yield? Yield's oncoming?
I believe it is a yield. I believe we have Alex or Tyler who could probably address that better.
Okay. Alex or Tyler, are you guys on?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, good evening, everybody. My name is Alex Mess, I'm with the Towns Engineering Department. Yes, Mr. Toborg is correct, that will have a pork chop, so it'll be a protected right turn onto Parker Road.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay. Other questions before we go to, John?
Yeah, I'm just to kind of, kind of further Councilmember Toborg's question. How far back does this go? I mean, to me, from a queuing standpoint, do we have additional right-of-way with Needers to kind of bring it back if it gets more congested or right now?
We do not have right-of-way on the Needer side at this time. You know, I, I think really we're looking for operational improvements here to be able to separate out the right turn from the current shared right through, through land that goes through Parker Road right now.
How many cars can we stack in that potential new, new turn lane? And I know it's continuous, but I'm just sort of trying to get a spatial understanding of.
Seven New Yorkers and three Coloradans.
Yeah, I, I don't have an exact number in front of me. I would say we could probably stack somewhere in the neighborhood of five to seven cars along there before we get to the right-in-only.
Great, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we've, if we can go ahead and bring the applicant up?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counsel and town staff, members of the public. My name is Carolyn White, I'm land use counsel for the applicant. We do have a PowerPoint presentation, which has been provided to staff. If that could be loaded up right now, that would be great.
And Carolyn, before we go forward, you know what I'm about to say to you because every time I see you over the last 12 years, I put my hands up like this and I go, say, what do I say? Go Lobos.
Everyone's a Lobo.
Carolyn and I went to the same college, so, but she did a lot better than I did.
They beat Wyoming this weekend, you saw that, I'm sure.
Yes, I did. All right, go ahead, once the, once we get the slides loaded up.
Just one more moment, please, thanks.
All right. It's so funny that PowerPoint and Zoom just don't like each other. It's like 60% of the time, they don't work very well and they, they don't like to play nice in the sandbox.
Well, I'm happy to present without it, but y'all are going to be sad if you don't have any pictures to look at while I'm talking.
How you feeling, Danette, you think it's a? Oh, oh, there we go.
There we go, here we go.
It is the PDF version instead of the PowerPoint, if that works for you.
We'll just make it work with a slow scroll. All right, well, thank you again for the opportunity to present again in this unique format. We're real pleased to be here with you tonight to present this project, which has been some two years in the making in, in order to refine the design and get to this point. What you see on the slide before you now is a list of all of the members of the applicant team who are here tonight, available to answer your questions, although the majority of our presentation is going to be myself and Brian Reno from Stan Tech. If you could scroll down to the next slide. The applicant, of course, is JP Morgan Chase, who I'll refer to as Chase. And as you've already seen, this is the location of the site. Chase is proposing to develop a bank with a single lane drive-up ATM, the drive-through is what we call it, in the southwestern corner of the site. And that, of course, is the reason we're before you on a use by special review because the bank by itself, without the drive-through, would, would not require that use by special review and isn't allowed use by right. These are the two approvals that we're requesting tonight. And really, the minor development plat has two components to it. That's the plat itself and the development agreement, as mentioned, next slide. You scroll down a little bit, there we go. So this shows the existing development. And what I'd like to mention and highlight about on this development is a, a number of challenges inherent in this site that we had to work with in designing something that not only would work functionally on this site, but also would comply with all of the applicable code requirements. So first of all, this is a very small site, it's only .72 acres and a significant portion of that is being dedicated to the town, as you already saw, for public right-of-way. The site is also a slightly unusual shape, particularly with those dedications slicing off some portions of it. It's, it's not rectangular and it is, requires some adaptation to fit a traditional sort of outparcled development like this into it. Also, as was noted, it is a former gas station. And as was noted by staff, the owner will be cleaning up the gas station as part of this project, if the project gets approved, in order for it to move forward. And that will be a process that is governed by the CDPE and ultimately we will be approved and monitored by the CDPE. We do have the property owner with us tonight in case the council has any questions for the property owner about that or other details related to the site. Another, another challenge of this site while we're, while we're on this slide is that it's located at the intersection of a major arterial, Main Street, and a regional connector that's also a six-lane highway, Parker Road. Further, it's also located, as was mentioned, in the overlay zoning district for the town center and is therefore subject to sort of two sets of somewhat conflicting requirements. It really needs to function in a way that works with the audio auto-oriented uses surrounding it and the very large roadways that are immediately adjacent to it. But it needs to be designed in such a way as to be compatible with and comply with the town center overlay, which is really focused on a much more, you know, pedestrian-oriented type design. And so finding the sweet spot in the middle of those somewhat conflicting directives was really the focus of this lengthy process of interaction back and forth with staff. Next slide. There's also an additional operational challenge that was mentioned earlier, having to do with access. There's the right-in-only, no direct access into the site from Parker Road, exit only onto Parker Road. And then finally, high visibility, this is an important site from the town, as, as we well understand, having worked with staff through the last series of processes. And it needs to be an attractive gateway to this part of the town, while at the same time functioning for its business purpose to make it an appropriate site for our development. So with that, if you could move on to the next slide, we'd like to show you what it looks like today compared with what it's going to look like if this project is approved as we move forward. And as you can see, it's going to be a very significant improvement. In a moment, Brian Reno is going to take over the presentation and explain in more detail how the site will function and describe some of these pedestrian amenities, active amenity plaza areas, extensive landscaping and screening, and the other architectural features of the building. But I want to just share with you that this is, as you can see visually here, going to be a very significant improvement and has been very carefully designed to navigate these operational challenges, as well as the site constraints, to produce something that we think is going to be a real benefit and a real addition to the town in this location. So with that, let me turn it over to Brian to talk about the site and I'll come back in a moment and talk a little bit about the applicable criteria.
Yes, great, thank you. I wanted to go back one slide and just point out that one thing you, one thing you should be aware of that's really critical here is when the new turn lane is added, that will bring the roadway closer to our building. And between, and with that change, we are also going to regrade the site. So right now at the hard corner where you see that white pickup in the existing picture, there's about a four and a half foot grade difference between the sidewalk and the pavement in the, in the gas station. And in combination with the realignment of the street right-of-way, we're going to change the grading and move the building up to the front of the site and, and make the entrance at grade, so you'll no longer have the, have this steep hand railing and grade difference there. The other important thing I want to point out is we're going to have a very strong corner gateway plaza. If you look at the north elevation in the lower left-hand corner, we'll have some tables and bike rack and other amenities in that area. And that helps us also with the grade change. Then we have a two-story corner feature, which will be looking into our two-story space inside the branch. And then we have a pedestrian entry facing Main Street, that, that's our most prominent elevation in a mix of natural stone materials and nichia and aluminum panels to blend the facility into the surrounding colors and textures and materials like the Needers next door. Also want to call attention here, and I'll point it out on the plan in a moment, besides the corner gateway plaza on the lower left of this illustration, on the right-hand side, to help activate the plaza and create pedestrian passages and activated pedestrian areas on both sides of the branch, we have another amenity zone on the right side of the plan, which will face Needers and our right turn in. And this will allow for circulation in and through the side on both sides. We can go to the next slide, thanks. And so, so this is, the next view is, if you can scroll up just a bit, this is the view from Parker Road. And again, you can kind of get a sense of how we're transitioning the grade with an accessible ramp that starts on the right side of the lower right-hand picture, eliminating that retaining wall and railing. And then it actually blends in and comes down across the site, screened by landscaping. And, and our side of those, of that landscaping will be the Sulphur Gulch Trail. And behind that will be our screen drive-up ATM use and the rest of our parking lot. And again, our two-story feature on the corner, next slide, please. Keep going, scroll down, sorry. Next slide, please. And then on the, on this slide, upper, upper left-hand illustration is the view that will face Needers with our amenity zone. It'll, it'll be landscaped with lower planting elements and, as well as taller trees and seating areas with, with some large stones. That'll again face the Needers and make a transition into our parking lot, also screen our utilities. And then the other elevation, which is similar to the front without the corner feature, will face our parking, will, will face the interior parking lot. And then on the right, you can see that slightly elevated gateway plaza on the right. Next slide, please. So here I'm just going to point out really quickly the principal features. The blue building in the, in the top of the site plan is the new branch. We're going to be adding, if we look at the landscaping features, there are four new street trees with iron grates and colored concrete paving to match similar areas of downtown Parker. Also, you can see our amenity zone on the left that faces towards Needers. You can walk through. You can walk through there and get to our parking lot on the side, and that'll actually connect to a secondary entrance to the building so we can have outdoor functions to encourage use by the community. And on the right-hand side is that corner gateway plaza that will connect to Sulphur Golds Trail along a landscape easement with CDOT. We're going to have 25% less structure and paving. We're going to be removing that retaining wall and fence. We're going to be regrading the site to have natural transitional slopes. The development will accommodate that new turn lane at Main Street and Parker. We'll have new landscape plaza and amenity zones, the new easement for the town sign and to allow the demarcation of the Parker Road and Main Street intersection in the center of town and 6,525 square feet of total new landscaped area. Next slide, please. Last thing I want to point out is we'll have a two-story height building, which will really help visually hold that corner and be one of the more prominent things at the intersection. It's going to define the line of the street, which is one of the community goals. We're going to also be adding smaller tree planters similar to those at the stage-run center out in front of there, and the connection of the Sulphur Golds Trail allows for pedestrian and bicycle connection to other parts of the development and surrounding neighborhood. And then I wanted to just point out, we've got a much lengthier presentation, but I think you're starting to get the picture. Our proposed drive-through ATM at the southwest corner of the site will be screened by the building, the landscaping, and the site grading, because it's in the lowest portion of the site. So from the corner of Parker Road and Main Street to where our drive-up ATM is in the lower left-hand side of the site, that will be about a four-foot grade difference, and we'll have two rows of trees and other plantings in between. And lastly, our project will comply with the Greater Downtown District Town Center zoning and the land development ordinance and the 2035 master plan and Parker Main Street master plan. We just need one more plan, and that's my presentation. Thanks.
Thank you, Brian. And moving on, if we could, to the next slide. In the next segment of our presentation, we had planned to go through the criteria applicable to each of the decisions. Before you, there are nine criteria for the use-by-special review and six for the plat. The staff report does a very thorough job of analyzing these criteria, so we're not going to spend a lot of time on them, although we're certainly happy to discuss in more detail any that the town council would like to focus on. Just a couple of points that I think are worth highlighting out of this list of criteria, because there's also significant overlap between the six criteria for the plat and the nine criteria for the use-by-special review. And I would note that many of them are also quite similar to the criteria for the two prior approvals that you've already undertaken this evening, namely harmony compatibility, consistent with the town master plan, and not resulting in over-intensive use of land and so on. So with that, we could just scroll down a little bit, and I will highlight one or two quick points. On this slide, what I want to mention is that the reason we're here is really talking about the drive-through. That is the component of this application that requires the use-by-special review. And so when we're talking about and analyzing the question of consistency and compatibility and harmoniousness, we look specifically at the drive-through. So as was mentioned by staff in their report, this location in particular, there are several other uses in the vicinity which have drive-throughs already, and so it's definitely compatible with what is surrounding it. We can kind of go through a list of them if you'd like, but there are six other uses in the immediate vicinity around this intersection that have a similar drive-through component to what's being proposed here as a use-by-special review. And also, as Brian noted, the drive-through itself will be minimally visible from the adjacent roadways due to the landscaping, the design of the site, the topography and its placement behind the building. So it really will have virtually no impact in this location. Next slide. We've also gone through and identified a number of different goals within the town master plan that would be furthered by the approval of this project, and the next couple of slides highlight some of those. Again, harmony, compatibility are some of the themes here, but there are also some themes about economic development, finding productive uses for vacant or underutilized land, furthering jobs and economic vitality, and this proposal would further all of those goals as well. Next slide. The project also is going to provide a prominent corner feature, and this is consistency with the town master plan. This corner feature in the two-story form with the bank building is very much encouraged by and is consistent with the types of design that is featured in those plan documents. Next slide. I've talked about these, and I won't spend too much time on them. You could keep going to the next slide. Thank you very much. Keep going, keep going. We've gone through some detail on all these master plans and similarly, over-intensive use of land. I might mention that the question did come up at Planning Commission, especially compared to the prior use that was on this location. This use will actually generate significantly less traffic than the prior use, but is nonetheless contributing this significant right-of-way to improve this intersection. So overall, the traffic situation will certainly be improved in this location. Next slide. There's my traffic congestion bullet point on this slide, so I've already covered that. Overall, this will be a net positive to the health, safety, and welfare of the present and future inhabitants of the town for all the reasons that we've already described. Next slide, please. Now we're talking about the plat and the six criteria for the plat, which are quite similar to the criteria we've already covered, so I won't repeat it. Obviously, consistency with the master plan, as staff has thoroughly analyzed and as we've described tonight, and consistent with the land development ordinance. Next slide. The town center standards in particular, and that's probably where we spent the majority of our time working on this site, was revising the design to achieve consistency with the town center standards and the intent of the town center standards. Next slide. There are significant public dedications here. We talked about the right-of-way. We talked about the sign easement previously. And there is, of course, a subdivision improvement agreement that accompanies the plat application, which has been executed by the applicant. Next slide. So in conclusion, this project has been very thoroughly analyzed in the context of the town's applicable codes and plans. It has been engineered and re-engineered and redesigned, working closely with town staff, to come up with this solution to the design challenges in this location and to put this long vacant site to productive use and create something of benefit to the town, both economically and visually and aesthetically, and from a capital improvement and utility standpoint as it relates to the functioning of this corner. So therefore, all the requirements under the code have been met, and we ask for your favorable consideration of a use-by-special review, a minor development plat, and the subdivision improvement agreement. As I mentioned, the whole team is here to answer any questions you may have, and we thank you for your time and attention to our presentation tonight.
Carolyn, thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Brian, thank you as well. Counsel, do you have any questions for the applicant before we go to public comment? Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe my question to Mr. Reno, please. Sir, if you could, just real quick, the drive-through, is there adequate stacking on the site? And what do you expect the use to be? How frequently do you expect cars, and do you expect queuing on the site?
I think we normally expect to have two or three car queuing at the peak time. We did provide a traffic report, and we have, if we go back to the site plan, we actually have a pass lane as well as a four-car, a five-car queue. If we can bring it back up to site plan, I can show you that.
I'm sure that you've got your facts and figures. Four to five is adequate. Thank you, sir. Real quick, one more question. Looking at the overview of the site, and this is just for my own indication, there is a sidewalk at grade that terminates your property from Keybank. Do you provide access to that sidewalk?
Yes, that is the Sulphur Golds Trail, actually, and we are going to connect to that and bring it right up to our pedestrian gateway plaza at the corner.
Thank you kindly, sir.
Cheryl?
I didn't have a question.
Oh, I thought you had your hand up.
No, but I have a comment. I'd like to say thank you. I really appreciate you taking on this really difficult site, and I think you've done a good job with it, and I'm looking forward to seeing your building there.
Any other questions before we go to public comment? No? All right, we'll open it up for public comment at 9:01 PM. If there's any attendees here in the Zoom meeting who'd like to give comment on this item, please use your raise-your-hand feature. Donnette, I'm not saying any. Can you confirm that?
I can confirm no public comments.
Okay, we'll close public comment at 9:02 PM. Before I call for a motion, Carolyn, it is always a wonderful getting to see you, and thank you very much for your thorough presentation. Brian, thank you as well. Counsel, before you, you have three different items. Each one requires its own motion and vote. So I would entertain further discussion or motion on C1, use-by-special review to allow a drive-through.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Chase Bank use-by-special review based upon staff findings with the conditions contained below in the staff report.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Josh, and we have a second from Cheryl. Counsel, please vote. How are we doing over there? Motion passes unanimously. Now we have item C2, which is the Chase Bank Minor Development Plat. I would entertain a motion on that, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Chase Bank Minor Development Plat based on staff findings contained in the staff report.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Josh, and we have a second by Cheryl. In just a sec, counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, and last one is item C3. It's the subdivision agreement. I would entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Chase Bank subdivision agreement based upon staff findings contained in the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion from Josh, and we have a second from John. Counsel, please vote.
This one's not going to work.
Now did it finally?
No, because it came back in color. When it's in color, it seems to be buggy.
Uh-oh. Let's see what happens. Fingers crossed. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we're going to have Debbie's having a quick bathroom break. Let's take a quick three-minute bathroom break before we get to our next items. Back to it. So what we have in front of us now, counsel, item eight, is our ordinances. The first one up, we have, and only one for ordinances, is ordinance number 1.548 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to levy general property taxes for the year 2020 to help defray the costs of government for the town of Parker, Colorado for the 2021 budget year. Mary Lou?
Thank you, Mayor. I am Mary Lou Brown, the Finance Director, and I am here to take the next-to-last step with the 2021 budget. So as part of the budget process, the town has to certify the mill levy for 2021 in order to be authorized to collect the property taxes. We certify the mill levy with Douglas County, and that has to be completed prior to December 15th. We do that electronically these days. We do have the final numbers from the county. Our assessed valuation is slightly over $936 million. That is a 3.2% increase over 2020. Since the mill levy stays the same without a vote of the public, the property tax revenue is also projected to be increasing that 3.2%, and it will be just over $2.4 million. With that, I'll take any questions.
Counsel, any questions? All right, seeing none, we'll open it up for public comment at 9:09 PM. If there's anyone in the Zoom meeting wishing to comment on this item, please use your raise-your-hand feature.
There are no public comments.
Okay, we'll close public comment at 9:09 PM, and I would entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.548 on second reading.
Second.
That's a motion from John and a second from Debbie. Counsel, please vote. We waiting on anybody, or... Oh, there we go. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is item number nine. These are resolutions. We have 9A, which is resolution number 20-061. This is a resolution calling a special election for the town of Parker to be held on April 20th, 2021 to fill a vacancy on the town council of the town of Parker pursuant to section 2.9C of the Town of Parker Home Rule Charter. Dr. Maloneystein, you're going to give us the presentation on this one, right?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Jim Maloney, the town attorney. You hit it with the title. This is simply a resolution to call a special election to fill the current vacancy that's on town council, and the recommended date for holding that election would be April 20th, 2021. Any questions, Mayor and Counsel?
Counsel, any questions? Nope? Okay, we'll open it for public comment at 9:10 PM. If there's anyone wishing to address counsel, please use your raise-your-hand feature.
There are no public comments.
Okay, then we'll close public comment at 9:10 PM, and I would entertain further discussion or a motion on 9A, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 20-061, please.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Josh, and we have a second from Cheryl. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda, item 9B. This is resolution number 20-063. This is a resolution opposing the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment's move of Douglas County to level red on the state's COVID-19 dial and the closure of indoor dining at local restaurants. indoor dining at local restaurants. Counsel, since this was a request made by you guys, and you all have seen in your packets what this resolution states, we'll just go right into if anyone has any questions before we go to public comment on it. Jim, is there anything you want to add to it?
No, sir. I don't know if you want to read into the record, section one and section two, in case there's anybody viewing.
Sure, I can do that. So I get to skip all the wherethes, because that would just like, you know? Or do you guys, counsel, do you want me to read it all?
It's up to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, well, I'm sure you guys are all sick of hearing me talk, so I'll just switch, flip down to the bottom. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the town council of the town of Parker, Colorado, section one, statement of opposition, the town council formally declares its opposition of Douglas County's and the town of Parker's unequal treatment by the state in being moved to level red on the COVID-19 dial and the resulting closure of indoor dining at our local restaurants. Town council demands the state reverse this unsustainable move and reopen indoor dining in Douglas County to level orange or less restriction level on the COVID-19 dial. And section two is a statement of support. The town council formally declares its support of the executive order issued November 25th, 2020, to provide up to $2,000 in temporary relief to Colorado bars and restaurants for sales made in November, and encourages the relief to be extended by the Colorado General Assembly when it convenes for a special legislative session. All right. Any questions, counsel, before we move to public comment?
Mr. Mayor, no, go ahead. Public comment.
John, did you?
Let's go public comment first.
All right, we're going to go ahead and open up public comment at 9:13 PM. We have three people attendees, and we have one hand raised, so the other two, if you want to comment, use your raise-your-hand feature. But otherwise, we'll go ahead and move, I think it was Sean, if I'm not mistaken, over. And Sean, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please. And just a reminder, you'll have three-minute time limit. You'll have to unmute yourself, too, Sean. Sean, looks like you're muted. Can you un, are we able to unmute him?
No, I don't see that he has any audio.
Okay. Sean, you're showing his, or actually, yeah, you're right, there's no audio button at all. It's just video. That's a quandary.
Sean, perhaps log out and log back in again?
Okay. I don't know if he can hear us, because he's still there.
Sean, can you raise your hand or use the chat?
Yeah, that's a good idea. Try using the chat, Sean.
Can you guys hear me?
Oh, there we go. Now we can hear you. Go ahead, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure thing. This is Sean Sindelman, 11300 Whipping Crane Drive, Parker. Mayor Wade and members of the council, I am speaking this evening in opposition of this resolution. While I see it as a symbolic action in an attempt to send a message to Governor Polis, I do not think it is the proper approach that this town council should be taking on the matter at this time. Also, the timing of it seems unnecessary, seeing as the rollout of the five-star certification program in the next week will allow businesses to return to an orange-level status if they show their ability to be compliant with and enforce the restrictions under that level. As elected representatives of the residents of Parker, it should be this council's duty to put the safety of those residents at the forefront and work on solutions to the problem at hand. Unfortunately, this resolution is not a solution that will help many businesses. If anything, it is a temper tantrum that will send the message to businesses that it's okay to go rogue, and those that follow that message will likely lose customers just based on many people in our town wanting to only support businesses who are putting safety first. I know it's been a rough year for businesses and the people behind them, but the sooner we all play ball, the sooner the whole pandemic will be tempered down, and everyone can go back to a sense of normalcy. A normalcy where businesses can fully operate and customers of those said businesses can feel confident in their health and safety. But the more we fight against these restrictions, the longer that will take. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much, Sean. I see we had one more person join on the attendees list, so we are in public comment right now for item 9B. If any of the three attendees would like to give public comment, please use your raise-your-hand feature, and we will move you over for comment. So that's Alan, Ian, or Yumi. If any, either three of you, or any of you guys want public comment, go and raise your hand now, or we're going to go ahead and move on. Go ahead. I don't see any hands going up. Donette, can you confirm?
I can confirm no public comments.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment at 9:16 PM, and I would entertain further discussion or a motion, please. Josh, yet discussion, or John?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can go.
Go ahead.
So, I mean, I guess to kind of respond to Mr. Sindelman's comments, you know, to me, I'd like to speak on the unequal treatment. You know, I've been a part of discussions, I'm sure others have been part of discussions as this COVID has, COVID situation has unfolded since mid to late March. And, you know, we, the collective we, Douglas County, Parker, Lone Tree, Castle Pines, Castle Rock, got together, staff as well as elected people, and tried to find ways to figure out and to communicate with not only our Health Department, Tri-County, but the CDPHE. You know, we efforted in the early times to find common ground or metrics, which are now kind of commonplace, to identify what, you know, how we measure in certain benchmarks. And, you know, to me, I think we've made great strides at that. But as we, as we created these variances to say, yeah, but what if, we submitted those, we got those approved, and the hope, at least early on, was for the state and for our, like Tri-County, to try to organize this and create thematics. You know, the Mesa County Five-Star Program, that was something within the variances that, to me, I don't have a date certain on when that was approved, but we got to a point where we're trying to say, what else can we do? How can we be safe, but yet how can we create a way for small businesses, more specifically restaurant and bars, to create commerce and do it in a safe and responsible fashion? And through discussions at a higher level, I believe it was at a county level, the discovery of this Mesa County Five-Star Program came up. It wasn't, it wasn't very proactive, it was reactive. So, you know, for me, it would have been ideal to have known about that program when those variances were approved. So not only could Mesa County enjoy that program, all the rest of the counties within Colorado could enjoy that program as well. And I think, to me, that's, that's the challenge that I see with this Five-Star Program. It may, it will be reviewed. It may be acted upon. It's our hope that it will be acted upon, again, you know, to create a safe and responsible environment, so we understand how we can do that for patrons as well as businesses. So to me, I think the unequal treatment is one of those things that kind of speaks to me within this. Thank you, Mayor.
Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is a, this is a tough one. I've talked to constituents a lot about this. Obviously, I've stated it during the last election. Our role is to represent 57,000, and the government's role, first and foremost, is to protect its citizens. In doing so, protecting citizens from a contagious virus is one aspect, but also protecting citizens from economic ruin. My colleague and my opponent during the election stated it very well, and I won't steal his words, but it's the truth. We have businesses that are hurting. We have a situation where there is unequal treatment. When I went and did my research this weekend, the cases weren't there to support what was happening in certain regions of the state. And I don't blame the state, I just think that it was maybe a knee-jerk reaction, and for the right reasons. I mean, you're trying to protect people, and we're learning, we're all learning at this. But I see no wrong in stating our opposition. I don't think that that is a bad move. I think we can state our opposition, and I think we should, if we feel as a council, state our opposition. In my research, I found an editorial in the Denver Gazette, and as of November 21st, 25th, quote, "As of November 25th, just before the latest shutdown of the inside dining in highly infected counties, 51 of the 35,929 Coloradans infected included people that were contracted the virus in a restaurant situation." That is 0.1% in restaurants. Now, I'm sorry, but if you, in comparison, 6,600 were in the healthcare, and 6,600 were also in the prisons and inmates. I'm not saying you could do anything different in those situations, but as comparison, 0.1%, 51 cases are documented in restaurants in the red counties. That's a hard nut to swallow as a businessman, it's a hard nut to swallow as a representative of business, and it's a hard nut to swallow as representative of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Any last comments?
I would like to go ahead.
Cheryl?
I would like to support Mr. Rivera's comments on this particular issue. What this really is representing is an unequal approach by the state to react to this particular pandemic issue. Rather than taking the time to look at it in area by area, they are just taking a unilateral approach, which is really causing economic devastation, and I can't support that.
Jeff?
So I think you all, John, Josh, Cheryl, you've all stolen my thunder, but I would just like to say, you know, this is truly, in the end, it is about the inalienable rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We all have it. We can all choose to go out, we can all choose to stay home. That's our choice, and I appreciate and I respect my fellow council members for your, what I presume is your stand here tonight. It's not always the easiest stand, but it's the right stand, so thank you all very much.
Debbie, did you want to add anything?
I think it's pretty much been said.
Okay. The only thing that I want to add to it before I call for a motion, through this whole thing, everyone from all sides has been begging for decisions and policies made on factual data rather than perceptions or emotions. And one of the most frustrating parts about this, to echo what everyone else has said here, but to put it into kind of real terms, which I very much like to do as people can have a comparative analysis of data, if every single restaurant in Parker, every single restaurant, was allowed to go with zero restrictions and be able to have full capacity of what their physical locations can hold, and they were able to turn the number of tables that would give them the best day they've ever had in the history of being open as a restaurant, the number of people that would go through those restaurants would still not equal the number of people that, under restrictions, are allowed to go to Costco, King Supers, Safeway, Big Boxes, and Parker. So if, at the end of the day, the goal is to limit personal interaction, to limit a contagious, and we can have debates and discussions on how contagious, on this or that, that's irrelevant, but at this point, if the goal is to limit those actions, restaurants and small businesses have been unfairly targeted, excuse me, targeted, almost punitively for something that does not meet the goal of what you would do in emergency management if you're trying to limit the number of people. So it's frustrating beyond belief, especially because the sole cardholder in this whole chess game is someone who sits at the Capitol and doesn't, doesn't, and has that authority and doesn't, you know, necessarily have to listen to what our constituents want. So it's important that local municipalities like this take a stance on whether they believe in it or not. So with that, counsel, I would entertain a motion on item 9B.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 20-063.
Second.
We have a motion from Jeff, and we have a second from Debbie. Motion passes unanimously. With no further business before counsel, we will adjourn at 9:26 PM. Have a good evening, everybody. Thank you.